There, or Kevin who is back in the back, or myself, any staff member, you're welcome to turn those in. We keep all those, and for everybody that has commented in the past, we keep all comments. So, all comments that has been emailed to us, voicemails, anything that has been sent to us, we have put in the file and made those available to what has been the planning commission all the way through the board. So, the two items, other things that we have up there, if anybody's got a copy, is we did provide a short-term ordinance, just the outline, just the summary of what the ordinance is, and then also the ordinance that is before the board currently, is a copy of that back there. If you do want this all electronic, you're also more than welcome to get in contact with staff after the meeting, and we can provide you an email you can send it to. So, I would just like to first acknowledge the board members that are here. We have Director Adcock over there, we have Director Lewis, we have Director Wierich, and we have Director Phillips. So, thanks, y'all, for being here tonight. This is a meeting just for, I'm gonna give a general presentation of the rental ordinance, that's why the summary is there, and then we're here to take comments. We have a mic set up there, so anybody can come up and make their comments be known. It is being recorded, so we'll have those comments, and we'll also present those to the board. So, with that, I'll give a short timeline of when this all started. About three, nearly three years ago, maybe a little bit over three years ago, we were asked by the board, several board members, to look into the regulation of short-term rentals. We then done a study and prepared a report and presented to the board on short-term rentals in the state, and also in adjoining states, in larger cities around us. And with that, they asked us, we would like a ordinance presented to help regulate those. And we started that presentation, and making of that, we had public meetings we went out to. And then, as everybody knows, COVID hit, and so all of that was put on hold. So, a little over a year ago, we were asked to start that back up again to kind of look at it. We have went out to two other public meetings, more situated in the neighborhoods where the majority of short-term rentals are found, and then we have also went to the planning commission. So, now, we are, come out to the public hearing, so the board wanted to hear more from the public, wanted to have some public input, and so that's what this is for. We want to make sure that everybody is heard. And so, with that, I'll kind of go through what each of the sections are. If you haven't read it, read the ordinance. It's broken up into four sections. Currently, we do regulate short-term rentals. Some people do not think that we do, but we do. It's underneath two different items. We've had a bed and breakfast. For us, that would be a short-term rental, owner occupied. Essentially, they're in a room in the house, and they're renting out his bed and breakfast, but breakfast doesn't necessarily have to be served in that determination. So, that has been on the books for a long time. Would be processing as a bed and breakfast, and it takes what we would process as a planned development and puts it underneath one ordinance, one regulation, for what we deem a short-term rental, be it owner occupied or non-owner occupied. It also sets forth regulations for the inspection of it on a yearly basis, and inspection fees accordingly, based upon the number of rooms that would be rented. And so, for section one, it just assures that the short-term rentals are taxed at the same rate as hotels and motels, and they currently are. Through Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau, and passing of that tax that does that in a part of the city, that regulation is already there. So, this is not a redoing of that regulation, that is just a restating of that. We have also already been asked to try to redo that verbiage, so it's not an additional 4% sales tax. It's already being collected, should already be collected, on anything that is considered a short-term rental. There's anything being rented 30 days, or less than 30 days, is a short-term rental. And so, we're going to modify that a little bit, just to essentially reference it back to that ordinance, which has already passed and should already be collected. Sections two and three codifies the treatment of short-term rentals and defines a bed and breakfast and short-term rental as the same, and that's that combining. So, instead of looking at two separate sections of code, we'll be looking at one section of code to regulate. Section four adds a new article under the zoning code, and the sections are as follows. You know, the purpose, you know, which section defines several terms of who's the responsible party, mainly for code enforcement, is it the renters, is it the property owners, and administrative approval. The entitlement section gives the requirements for the short-term rental. It delineates the process for our review through there, and it goes on to enumerate documents that need to confirm the S T R ordinance that predates the ordinance. So, if there is one out there now, how are we going to handle that if an ordinance gets passed? You know, through there. An annual inspection fee, and that's what that is, that to verify the life safety requirements, because it is considered a commercial business, entities, it may be the first time that a renter, short-term renter, may show up to that property, and so there is some life safety aspects that need to be inspected. So, this whole regulation is set up for that inspection at least once a year, to go inspect that, to have staff dedicated to that inspection. Responsible party, it also says for other section is to enumerate the duties and availability of the party if a complaint is filed on there, and there's a 24/7 aspect on that, that they need to be available. And the development standards, and that goes with the floor plan, safety devices, parking in some areas, you know, how is parking gonna be handled, whether, because some of the older sections of town, the homes were not built with other than a driveway, didn't really have parking garages at that time in the back. Might have been serviced off an alley, so how many rooms is being rented? And so, we're requesting a parking plan, essentially. Where are you going to park the vehicles, so we can see how that may affect the property? And also, what we're more concerned with, how does that affect the roadway and the parking on that roadway in that location? There also is a section in there for insurance requirement, and I do want to note that, I think that's in there for a million per occurrence, but that is also a standard insurance requirement, that I can't speak for every platform out there, but one of them, Airbnb, does provide that, you know, in that rental, in their contracts that they do. And then, the last is the compliance sections. So, we have code enforcement, we go out there, our office also does code enforcement. Then, there's a compliance and an appeals section in that process, you know, for short-term rentals. So, in general, that is the rental ordinance summary outline that we have. With that, I would really like to open it up to the floor, because that's what this is, for anyone that wants to come up, make comments, suggestions, ask questions. We'll do our best to answer every question that is proposed to us, and they could ask questions, I guess, of also the board members that are here and present. Sure. Anyone that wants to raise their hand and go? I think that's it. Is that all the microphones we have? Yes, that is.
Thank you very much for, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for holding this meeting. I appreciate the board members present. I'd like to just read a piece that I've submitted to the board for their consideration during the, several times that this has come up for discussion. My name's Paul Dodge, I live at 2119 West Seventeenth Street. I'm an Airbnb super host with several lovely apartments within 1,500 feet of my home. I have 10 points to make about the draft ordinance. Please clean up the legal drafting to avoid later problems, it's a mess. Harsh early drafts made short-term rental permits awful to get and easy to lose with vigilante complaints decided solely by the plan-in-chief. Complaint, inspection, and revocation procedures are still broken and too discretionary. Point two, the draft draws from major tourist towns, not local market reality. No local data was presented to support the regulatory need or to analyze its impacts, why not? Three, burdensome procedures do not equal planning vision. Plan how many S T Rs might be good, where, and why. Use this to encourage development and disinvest it in historic neighborhoods. The draft provides no tools to address issues like loss of affordable rentals or real threats to neighborhood tones, it's a blunt, blind instrument. Four, the draft unwisely ignores internet platforms. To protect all from non-compliant providers, platforms should de-list SCOTF laws or be fined. Solve the problem at the source. Five, data hoarding platforms collect taxes from S T R hosts but anonymize platforms made to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The draft puts the full tax obligation on owners who can never know if their payments are correctly attributed, fix this. Six, the draft does not define who is an owner, what happens with places that are sublet as S T Rs, and whether large owners can evict tenants en masse for S T Rs. Again, planning is in a vacuum of data, research, or a plan. The strong will win while Little Rock loses. Seven, implementation failure is likely. Projected revenues and needed staffing levels are in a black box. We need realistic transition periods with flexibility when regulators fall behind. Why not use the rental inspection program? Why duplicate bureaucracy to inspect constantly the best rentals in town? Save the hassle and decrease inspections for hosts with good track records. Eight, please study both potential lost income for banned S T R hosts, especially small-scale ones, and loss of tourist visitors when many S V Rs close and those remaining have high regulatory costs. Many will be hurt by this rule. How, who, and why? Nine, legalize short-term rentals, need a seat on the Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau. We are an important and tax-paying part of what attracts visitors, it's time to let us in. Ten, please form a committee to craft a framework that lets the city plan, not just react, and use short-term rental platforms to make Little Rock better for everyone. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, there you go, Director Phillips. Anybody else that wants to come to the mic? If y'all would just line up at the mic, I think that would be best, just one right after the other. Whoever wants to get up there and speak.
Good evening, or good evening, I'm Maya Foreman, and I have a couple of short-term rentals. Never had a problem, always quiet, and I would just like to make a statement for people who may be against short-term rentals. I purchased a home initially for my mother. She fell sick and had to take, and had to take care of her. Well, I'm a real estate broker. If you're not selling houses and listing houses, you're not making income. And if you have to take care of a parent, being able to turn your property into a short-term rental that is income, bringing income to the table, it allows you to give into life care, whether it be a year or two, and for me, it was two years. So, being able to turn my property into a short-term rental gave me the space and the income that I was lacking from not being able to buy and sell houses and move like I normally would to bring income into my home, but it also gave me that hands-on care to wash my mother's feet, scrub her back, and things that I needed to do. I'm so not an emotional person, but she just died in September. So, it's very recent for me to, and it's very personal for me, because it wasn't to destroy my neighborhood. Hell, I love the neighborhood that my short-term rental is in. And my short-term rental actually has improved the property value, because when I got it, it had shack, carpeting, and wood paneling. So, whenever I do decide to sell my property, being able to use that short-term rental to bring that income into my family when I couldn't do my normal real estate brokering job, made a difference in my household. I also have some fourplexes. When I bought those fourplexes, they had rats, they had roaches, the tenants were falling through the floor, literally. My husband fell through the floor, rats coming out. The rent was like $2.65 with water included. So, you can imagine the kind of tenants that were able to afford those places. And I, I understand where people saying, hey, you know, you up the rent, and, and now certain people can't afford it. That's not what I did, I improved that community for my block. My neighbors now have people who can afford to stay there that are quiet, because I didn't just do all Airbnb, I could have, but I have a tenant that's on housing, who's been there for three years. And I also had some regular renting tenants that were just for a year. So, allowing that flexibility, it really does bring some value to the community, because you're allowing people to come to the community from other places, but it also lets people like myself, who just regular old people in the community, allow them to have some income to do things that they need for their family when life changes happen. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name's Bobby Matthews. Like, my comments about the S T Rs, I'd like to ask you to build more certainty in this whole process, especially for those that invest in the community. We're putting a lot of money into these, you know, some of us are putting a lot of money into these properties, and if you just pulled a rug out from under us, we're just left holding the bag at the end of the day. For being a very good, the house is great, the, you know, host is great. For whatever reason, like, there could be some snag that tears us down. But at the same time, like, the biggest issue that I can see from Airbnbs that I feel like you need to tackle is negligent homeowners. People that are out of state, that are doing something like, without the neighborhood knowing. There is a provision here for 1,500 feet, I feel like that should be more, like, more of a neighborhood-wide distance, not just, I mean, so there's more people in a neighborhood, if they have an unsafe vacant property that they could buy, fix that up and do something more to build the neighborhood. This is a great resource for that tool. Understand, all neighborhoods aren't the same. Some neighborhoods really don't want Airbnbs. Let them define that at a neighborhood level, hill crest heights, I don't know what the issue is there. I don't mind, you know, hosting strangers in my neighborhood, they're all great. We know who each other are through the platform. But what I can see from this regulation, attempt of regulation, is that it's gonna do more harm than good. I feel like stakeholders need to be invited to the table. Hosts need to be on a task group to make sure that what we know makes it into the draft, because I feel like there's a lot missing from what we do as, on the platform, that could be integrated into this. There's a lot of loopholes here, and I wanted to just kind of share those things, but please build more certainty into it. Maybe if it goes to a planning board, maybe go through staff approval, not through a commission, and it seems to be a little too overburdensome with those. Please build consistency or certainty into the process for the investors, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Angela Matthews. You just heard from my husband. I just want to piggyback on that and kind of let you know how we got into Airbnb hosting. We live in the Central High neighborhood. Much like the lady right here before us, we didn't actually finish out the house with the expectation that we were going to Airbnb it. It actually started out It actually started out as a place for my grandma, who was ailing. She couldn't actually stay in our house because we have all the bedrooms on the second floor. So we ended up buying the house next to ours. It was a duplex. And we figured we would have a long-term tenant in one unit, and my grandma could live, or could come visit and stay in the front unit. We considered the possibility that when she wasn't there, that we could also Airbnb this unit. It worked out really well for us. And we ended up actually Airbnb-ing it more because my grandma's health faded and she wasn't able to visit as much as we had liked. But being able to short-term rent this property gave us the option to make a rehab in what was a very sad and dilapidated house that wasn't occupied. We are not taking away housing. This was not something that was even livable. We turned this into something livable with the conjunction... And it was a historic property. But the historic tax credits weren't even enough to make this property what it needed to be. I mean, we spent a ton of money getting this thing up to a livable standard. And the only way that we could even break even was through using short-term rental. We now currently have a nurse that lives in the back unit. She's a long-term tenant. We use our short-term rental income to subsidize her rent. So we have not been able... We've not had to raise rent on her in three years despite the fact that everything's gone up. Property taxes have gone up. My... Our mortgage has gone up, our interest rates. But yet, the short-term rental has allowed us to not have to up her rent, which I feel really good about as a landlord. And it also saved a house in our neighborhood that would have probably been torn down otherwise. That's kind of what we do. We have full-time jobs, but for some reason, we're suckers and we buy that sad house in every neighborhood that everybody goes, I'm pretty sure that one should be torn down. That's what we do. We buy UV properties. We buy houses that have been vacant for five years that probably should be UV properties but aren't. We actually had such a good experience with Airbnb that we bought four houses on the corner of Chester and Bussy. If you're familiar, it's that pitiful-looking shotgun house that everybody thought should have been demolished. And they... And honestly, the city was about to demolish it when we started. We've actually been able to revitalize and bring back that block. We're not done yet, but we're close. And when we get done, we are counting on the fact that we can short-term rent those for at least a few years just to get them back so we can break even. And that is critical to us being able to do that. Short-term rentals make it possible for us to invest in these communities, like Central High, like Dunbar, these places that have been neglected. Short-term rentals allow us to do that, and we care about our neighborhoods. I mean, we live there. I'm not going to bring in a party house. That's not what I want because this is my neighborhood. We keep our occupancies intentionally small so we don't have that problem. We have noise monitoring. All of these things aren't really addressed in the proposed draft. And that's where I think if you would incorporate some of the actual hosts, you would get something that's actually tailored to what you're trying to accomplish because as it's currently drafted, it's just not going to do what we want it to do. You're just making it hard for everyone who's hosting. And you're creating something that's hard for the city to enforce. As Paul so eloquently mentioned, you've got to regulate the platforms. That's how you solve all of this. If you require an actual license number and if you make Airbnb not posted unless they have a license number, you could potentially regulate. But as it's currently drafted, that doesn't exist. It just needs some further refinement. Even some of the language in there about limiting occupancy to two per bedroom. You know what you've forgotten? How many couches can you throw in the living room that have a pull-out sofa? I mean, seriously, all of these party houses that are run inevitably by out-of-state investors, they're full of sofas that people are sleeping on. So it's just things that if you want to actually craft something that will work, you need to bring the host to the table. And you don't need to take away what is a very valuable way to revitalize some of our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Hi. I'm John Walker Jr. Many of y'all know my deceased father, Attorney John Walker. And I'd like to ask one question. You said questions or whatever. Are you all speaking of making change by ward or by neighborhood?
It's city. This ordinance is passed, it's a zoning ordinance. It applies to the entire city.
To the entire city, okay.
Including our extraterritorial jurisdiction. So it is all areas that we have zoning jurisdiction over.
All right. Well, it appears to me, it appears that everybody, almost everybody that's gotten up is being self-served. I don't know that it's helping like our community. I was raised in University Park. My father bought the first 13 lots west of University back in the late '60s. And that was considered, at that point, the furthest western part of the city. And that was the first neighborhood that was determined to be considered African-American. So we created this environment. And now we're seeing an infiltration of people coming into our neighborhood. And they're doing Airbnbs, a few of them. And, you know, my dad didn't, he didn't construct that to be an Airbnb. We have a quiet neighborhood, had a quiet neighborhood. But now, just in the last six months, and my dad's been deceased three years now. But his house alone has been violated at least five or six times. We have multiple reports, police reports, where people have gone in and they have infiltrated his house, broken into the house, broken into our guest house, done all sorts of things. So what I'm saying is, you know, it's not always a money thing. You know, we need quiet. We need peacefulness. We need an environment. In certain neighborhoods now, you know, some folk might believe that their neighborhoods are deemed and do, you know, for, you know, Airbnbs and whatever. But our neighborhood has always been a decent neighborhood. And for you all to allow, not only our neighborhood, but others... And I'm gonna tell you, it seemed like more white folk come up and they're looking for opportunity. It's an opportunity for white folk to come in, take our properties. If you look downtown, all those properties that used to be black... My dad would say the same thing. Now, they're, you know, they're white. If you go out to our neighborhood, more and more white folk coming out there. And I don't have a problem with people coming out in our communities and looking for a little bit of gain. But you don't try to come out there and take it over anymore. So my problem with this whole Airbnb thing, and I ain't gonna lie, I don't mind. I've looked into Airbnbs. But when you have quiet communities and you have thriving and vibrant communities that are peaceful, then, you know, sometimes you don't need to violate that. And I don't think that... And, you know, you might need to break that up. If you break it up, you break it up. But at this point, I just don't think it's necessary at this particular time. Now, it's gonna go there. It'll get there at some point in time. But I just don't think right now is the right time. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Al Adams. I'm on the board of Echo Valley. We... About a year ago, we had an owner leave town and open their home up for an Airbnb. And of course, the first weekend, there was a party. And there was a problem with too much noise. Well, I think we talked through with everybody and decided what would happen the next time if that happened, how we would resolve it. The police were not called, and they probably should have been. I don't know. There were... These were just questions that nobody really knew how to kind of address because this was a new thing for our neighborhood. I... I'm not sure... First of all, let me just ask a question. I don't think a property owner's association can restrict the use in their neighborhood for short-term rentals. Is that right?
If it is not part of the covenants and restrictions that was filed with the plat, then probably not. Typically, that goes in your covenants and restrictions. So if you're in the older part of the city, those covenants were not part of that. And then they also make covenants. They put in subdivisions. That may be good for 20 or 30 years. And then they have a sunset timeframe. And then some of them are good forever. You know, and it does restrict commercial businesses and those. But that's a... That is considered a private agreement between the homeowners association. Whenever that lot is sold, typically, everybody has to be in agreement. So they're usually in place, those types of agreements are in place at the time of lot sales. To get something like that in place after the fact, you have to have 100% of the agreement of all lots within the subdivision. And then you get an attorney to draft it all, and then it has to be signed and agreed.
We don't have covenant, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to...
But for the noise, there is...
Initiate a new, a new kind of rule here.
There is a noise ordinance already on the books that covers all properties within the city, whether they are commercial or residential. And so any noise, whether it's a party or just any nuisance noise that we consider after a certain time of night, that's turned in as a nuisance with the police officers and then our office.
Has the state legislature weighed in on this? I thought they were considering passing some rule law about this.
The state was considering a bill that came in from the Senate, and it did not make it through the House, and the session has ended.
Okay. If... Will all this be public information when you let a permit out? Will that be public information? Will the realtors know about it? Would prospective buyers know about this when they came in and looked at a house on the street? How many in that, on that street were licensed that way?
Yes, if, even currently in our regulations, be it a bed and breakfast or planned development, anything that is rezoned, and this would be the same case for the ordinance that is before everyone, it goes through a public hearing. And then when it's rezoned, whether it's additional use permit or a full zoning, it is, goes into our files. We have a copy online that's available, that anybody can look at. It's off our website, littlerock.gov, underneath Planning and Development. And then we have a tab that's all of our maps. And then that map is the zoning of all the properties zoned within the city. And you can actually look into your area and find out what everybody is zoned in your area.
I think most of my neighbors would be concerned if too many houses went this way. Just there's always some concern about too many rental houses. Renters are fine, but I mean, there's always this concern. So I guess there is no limit, there is no restriction at your level about the number of houses that could be permitted for short-term.
Currently, there's nothing right now in the ordinance, but there has been discussions that that may be a modification to put that, a cap on there. But that has not been determined and is not presented at this time.
Okay. I think that would be helpful for my neighbors if they knew that there was some limit to what this might turn into. So thank you.
Hello, and thank you, directors, for coming. I really appreciate y'all giving us this opportunity. My name is Pam Powell. I'm president of the University Park Neighborhood Association. We are not against short-term rentals. We just firmly believe that the ones that do not have an owner present should not be allowed in areas zoned residential. There are neighborhoods who have no problems with STRs, owner occupied or not. And that's my point, just as several of the owners made. Neighborhoods should have a say in this. In University Park, we'd like to have a say. In order to get a street light, in order to get a no parking sign, neighborhoods have a say. But to put a motel next door, as many as you want, whether you are an individual or a big company, neighborhoods can't have a say. As of last week, the Airbnb chairman stated that they're going to go back to their roots, renting rooms. He also predicted a slowdown in revenue. There have been reports of robberies, human trafficking, shootings, deaths, lawsuits, fires, meth labs at STRs. Could these be contributing factors? North Little Rock and other cities have reported that they cannot get a response from Airbnb when queried regarding taxes owed to the city, the same as Paul said earlier. So tax revenue can't be depended upon. And why should STRs that violate the rules only be given a citation? If I park somewhere that's not legal, I get more than a citation. I get a ticket. They take, can take a huge toll on the serenity and the character of a neighborhood. And if larger cities nationwide and internationally are being more restrictive on STRs, would it make sense for Little Rock to research this? And I know y'all have done some research. You've been working on it for three years. But maybe we ought to write an ordinance that took all of this into consideration. Airbnb owners want clarity to move forward. Residents want clarity to know that if we bought something in an area zoned residential, it means zoned residential. I saw where the Chamber of Commerce is going to be paying $10,000 bonuses for professionals to move here. Little Rock is a beautiful city. We have a lot to offer. But would you want to move into a neighborhood that you thought was zoned residential only to find out a motel with no manager on site was next door? Would you be comfortable living next door to one? I asked that question to several authorities affiliated with the city. And shockingly, two of them told me that they didn't have to worry about it in their area. And before you think it was a racist remark, it wasn't. One of these people was black and one was white. Oh, let them eat cake. Would you be comfortable with your parents living next door to a motel with no manager on site? Your kids, your grandkids, different people in and out every day with no idea who they are, where they're from? And before you say that Airbnb is self-policing, I beg to differ. There are reports that the negative reviews don't always get posted. And yes, STRs can raise property values. In Austin, Texas, a 1,000-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath house built in the 1950s with a little paint and cheap flooring, last sold for $800,000. So the surrounding property owners, who have lived there for many years, can't afford the property taxes. Please consider everything we're saying. I know, you know, you've worked on it, but I think it needs a lot more work. And thank you for listening.
I'm Kathy Wells, president of the Coalition of Little Rock Neighborhoods. So, yes... Oh, bless you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Fred. Thank you for kindness, friends. And so our coalition covers a lot of different neighborhoods, those that are very fully developed. And we really see the concerns there about oversaturation and fighting over the parking places. Certainly need to be addressing those. Do want to point out the preference to paved parking off the street should be revisited because in these sustainable policy days, we want some porous kind of paving so we don't add up to a big new shoot for the rain runoff on these heavy rain days we've been having. So let's not mess ourselves up with that one. We pointed before to the incentives that we need for our blighted neighborhoods. And I was able to look today at the city's unsafe and vacant list, hundreds of addresses. Turns out, Ward 1 is number one. They have 264 UV structures on the list. Ward 2 comes in at 105. So we need incentives for redevelopment of these properties in these areas beyond the waving of restrictions for historic houses, which is great, and we're glad you're doing that. But let's not quit there, particularly when you look at the fact that in that unsafe, Ward 1 list, in the Central High Historic District, there's 30 unsafe buildings. And they really suffer. And they are very close to being what they call delisted, which would be really awful bad news. So let me put a real big... So let me put a real big emergency light over that for Central High Historic District. This is a tool in the city kit that is not being applied and should be applied. We certainly appreciate the ban on the private parties you've explicitly stated in there, and we certainly want officials to crack down hard on any offenders, but I respect the remark that that's already against the law, and you simply need to be calling the cops on your neighbors. And if the cops aren't coming fast enough, then I think we all know there's other folks at City Hall, we can bring in this to their attention. We need to respect the fact that has been said several times, enable the current residents to enable them to earn a profit on their asset. That enables them to rise in the world. There's been a lot of economic discussion in recent months about your house is this valuable wealth asset. This is not my field of expertise, but I respect the fact that if you have your home with the possibility of rentals, you have an asset. And that, by the way, seems to be a tool that would prevent the ouster of our residents by these absentee investors who care only about their cash. So let's encourage the good and stave off the undesirable. And we do need to make sure that those absentee owners are registered as required under the business license, and they make it clear who that is to the, uh, authorities. It's not clear to me that the references in this draft to responsible party accomplish everything that registering an agent does. So let's put, um, real scrutiny on that one, please. And we do, do support prevention of oversaturation, which hasn't made it into this proposal yet, but we need to do that. And other cities have done it, so we just need to figure out the best one and take it for ourselves. We certainly support the provision that owners are prompt to addition, attend to the issues that arise, whether they live at the property or not. We would really like to hear more from the staff urban planners. I don't think we've really had this statement from them about what the professionals might recommend, and I really would hope for a review and a comment that we could all share. Thank you for your attention.
As you can see, I am empty-handed. I did not type out a full-blown list of points because I genuinely just had a question. I'm new to City Little Rock, my name is Terry Antala, I moved here about a year ago, and I came from Dallas, Texas, where Airbnbs are very quickly becoming all the rage. Everywhere you look, you're seeing different Airbnbs popping up on different blocks, and of course, for the people who own the Airbnb, it's excellent, a great driver of income. A lot of people come to Dallas, they wanna see the city, they wanna tour, things of that nature, but for the people who are invested in the city for the long term, it's a long-term headache. And so the big thing that I'm personally curious about, I'm an engineer, and so the very first thing I wanted to see was where is the research? Is that publicly accessible? Because I actually wanna see the statistics, because I think Little Rock has like a owner occupancy rate of like fifty-five percent, somewhere up in there. So I'm wondering, how has that figure been changing over the last few years? Because what I'm wondering is, for example, when you are bringing in people, you're paying them ten thousand dollars to come in and move to the area, at what point are we trying to encourage, like, I almost wanna say sustainable development, or encouraging them to come and stay versus ma- them making this a, a detour on their journey of life?
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm not a long-term resident here either, I moved here in twenty-one. Um, but I have experience with Airbnb both as a guest and as a host. I had great experience staying, uh, here, uh, with someone, he was also present in the house, um, and he could fill me in on things and tell me about the area, it was great. I also had great experience when I was a host, and I was, um, uh, there to greet people and tell them, you know, here's how you get the bus into New York City. I lived very close to the city. Um, and, um, funny thing, though, about the Airbnb advertising, they feature the hosts greeting guests and enjoying their interactions with each other. But then, when you become a host, you realize, huh, they actually are favoring hosts who are not going to be present. You can only advertise either one room or the whole house. It was really hard to host a family, which at my house I could easily do. Um, I had a late Victorian, a big house, um, and yet, there was no way that I could say, you know, I could host a family without listing it as the whole house, meaning somebody expected I wasn't gonna be there. Uh, it was kind of interesting, the only problems I had as a host were with people who didn't want me to be there. Uh, there was somebody from the, the next town who, uh, wanted to rent for New Year's Eve, and I gleaned from the conversation, they wanted to have a party. Well, I wasn't gonna inflict that on my neighbors, I turned them down. Um, and then there was a couple who told me that, uh, they wanted to be able to go around naked. Um, I don't know why, they had to come to my house to go around naked, but, um, I mean, I had a tree-covered, uh, backyard, felt very private, but it was a fifty-foot wide lot. So my neighbors all around were easily able to see into my backyard, and, uh, you know, I just wanted no part of it. Oh, and then there were the people that made the movie, uh, students from just school of the arts, um, sounded like a great thing, yes, they would take care of things, they would clean up after themselves, yes, but once they were gone, well, there were the building materials that they had used sitting there for me to take care of. So my conclusion was that something that was a dedicated Airbnb with nobody around, um, to, to look after what was going on was inevitably gonna turn into a problem for the neighbors. And now, when I was looking at houses here, I ran into this one house, and I wondered why someone did things so awkwardly, like an appliance that you could hardly get to, and, uh, a drawer that wouldn't open very far because it bumped into the oven. Uh, it was really weird. Oh, and then, then there was a three-way switch that only worked as a two-way, and the roof that had been half-re-roofed. Um, well, then I found out, oh, the owners were a group from California, and they couldn't afford to buy rental houses in California, so they bought rental houses in Arkansas. I thought, wow. So the guy had no idea what was going on with the house, he'd hire a contractor and tell the contractor, I want X, and the contractor would do it. The guy he hired to do the roof did the front of the roof, or the main part of the house, and didn't do the back, which leaked. Uh, you know, that was, I, I just could picture, oh my gosh. What would happen if somebody from California were buying houses in Arkansas and putting them out as Airbnbs? What kind of problems could we have here? So it, it just, um, concerns me that we'd have what is essentially somebody's business, as you said, a, a commercial business, um, allowed to operate in a neighborhood, and there's still a loophole in things as they're written that allows somebody to go and get permission, and people are sure to come pressuring, um, to, to do that. So, uh, I have a concern for that. Um, I also have a concern for the people who would really like to live in the neighborhood, like a long-term rental, or, um, buying a house and, um, allowing things to become short-term rentals is not only competing with the hotel motel business, but it's, um, keeping those people, um, out of, of the neighborhood, and I'd much rather live beside them. I really do not wanna live beside a motel. Um, the other thing that concerns me is all the calls I get. People that wanna buy my house. I'm like, what? Are they calling me because I'm older? Because my house is paid off? What's the deal? I think they're calling because they wanna buy it and make money renting it, and I don't wanna do that to my neighbors either. So I've started telling them, the price is a million dollars, when you're ready to offer that, call me back. Otherwise, don't call me.
Good evening, my name is Denise White, and I guess my house falls under a bed and breakfast. Um, I rent rooms to, uh, medical students that are coming to Little Rock to, uh, work short-term for thirty days. When you see on television that they have match day for the hospitals that they're gonna work at, those students have to go to different hospitals and interview for thirty days. They go there and they work, and they interview with the staff, they do surgeries with the staffs, um, and then, um, the different hospitals grade them, and they get offers. So when you see them celebrating on match day, somebody has given them an offer. I consider myself an ambassador for Little Rock because I have students coming from New York, Louisiana, Texas, Missouri, uh, and they stay at my house, and I'm there with them. Um, they're by far the best renters you can ever have, because the last thing they want me to do is to call UAMMS and say, they messed up, because they need a job. Cause if they don't get a job, those hundreds of thousands of dollars of student loans come due. So they're quiet, they're doing one of three things, working, sleeping, or studying. Some of them, they live close, like in Missouri, even Texas and Louisiana, some of them leave every Friday and go home to their families, a lot of them are married. Um, I've been doing it now for probably about ten years, and it's been the best experience I could ever have. A couple of them, I told them, don't forget me, cause when I get old and I need a vascular surgeon, I'm gonna look you up. So, um, they, they have been, uh, some of the best people I've ever met. Uh, they're caring, uh, you know why they're becoming doctors. Um, they, um, they really wanna do well for their interviews, and, um, I give them some insight on what it's like to live in Little Rock. Uh, I was born and raised here. Uh, I tell them places they can go on the weekends, you know, do you like to climb? Go to Pinnacle. Or they ask me, where is this place named Pinnacle? Um, so I feel like I'm an ambassador when they come to my home. Um, I have, um, a four-bedroom house, I never rent more than two rooms at a time, because the rooms upstairs have, uh, baths, so I don't want anybody to have to share a bathroom. Um, I'm also, in real life, a mortgage loan officer. Uh, I think the points that people have made that the city needs to have someone on your staff or with you guys that is active with the rentals, I believe that needs to happen. Um, the one thing that worries me about Little Rock, like the lady said, the people that's calling all the time, cause I get the calls too, I start my bid off at a half million, the first thing they say is, it's not worth it. Yeah, but you called me. So this is where we start talking, at a half million. Uh, the other thing that worries me is the other night I saw on the news where the city is gonna start tearing down a, a whole bunch of abandoned homes, and you got all this land. So the next thing people are gonna start doing is moving in and building things that they may be renting on, um, airb- as Airbnbs, you know, and not doing owner-occupied homes. The biggest problem I have right now as, as a loan officer is people finding houses. They can't find them. When they do, there's six offers, and they don't get them. I have one lady that I've been working with since, uh, last spring, every house she has made an offer on, she's gotten a bid on. So that concerns me. Um, I don't think that all the people that do Airbnbs are just in it for the money. Um, people like, uh, these people over here that renovating houses in Central High District, that's a good thing for the city, cause eventually, one day, they may decide, we don't wanna do this anymore, and sell the house, and then it becomes a primary residence. Uh, we are lacking such volume on primary residence in this city, it is unbelievable. And, um, I know Airbnbs aren't what everybody wants to see and hear, but hopefully, eventually, that too will die down, and they, they'll use them as long-term rentals, or they'll sell them as primary residence, cause we do need the volume. I appreciate your time.
Hi, you know, my name's Arthur Sab. Um, I had a couple of questions about the ordinance, and just to get some information on it. Okay, my first question was on the annual inspection fee for one hundred dollars up to five hundred. You said that was for safety?
That is, uh, that is done by bedroom, however bedroom you're gonna do, from one hundred to a max of five hundred. And that is to offset the cost of providing an inspector, because you have to have a building inspector inspect it yearly, and a fire marshal has to inspect yearly. That fund does not go to my department, we are part of the general fund. It is just a revenue that goes in to help offset the cost of what we would pay an inspector for the year, and also any vehicles or cost to operate those vehicles.
Okay, is that similar to the inspection fee for the hotels?
We don't do those, that's not our department.
Well, I understand it, but I don't know, would you happen to know if it's around a similar amount for the hotels?
That I do not know.
Or they're doing the same amount?
Yeah, we set that amount because that's, our department is the one that's going to be regulating short-term, so we've done the analysis of what that would be, how many could be inspected by an individual in a year, and try to put it on a cycle.
So I, I saw in here where it talks about this concludes the hotels and all of those things, you saying that's not part of?
It's not part of it. That tax, and that's why I was explaining it first, is that tax has already been set, there's an ordinance that establishes, establishes, I'm sorry, the Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau and sets that tax to be collected on anything that is what would be considered a short-term rental, which that would be hotels and motels, but it also would include, uh, what we're talking about now. Uh, so that tax is separate, that does not go, uh, to this department or the city general fund, that goes for LRCVB, you know, for what that ordinance is set for.
Okay, okay. So there's no way you guys could do collaboration, maybe if their taxes are a lot lower for the hotels and higher for the Airbnbs?
It's gonna be the same, it's a short-term rental, so it's anything that is.
Same for the hotels?
Yes, that tax is already them, so they will get that four percent tax, we won't.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I meant for the, uh, inspection fee.
Oh, for the inspection fee, that, that happens regardless of that tax, that is something that we have to do, uh, if we're gonna do it on a yearly basis for, uh, for commercial properties.
Okay.
And so that was just figured out on what we would do to be able to do that yearly inspection, uh, to go ensure that life, safety, health, and welfare items are took care of.
Okay, was there a collaboration with the hotels, since they've done it before and done more research on how the hotels would do it for their safety? Was there any collaboration to see if, if their amounts was more or less, or any comparison to see? Well, I, what I'm trying to figure out is if the hotels get a far lower tax, I mean, an inspection fee than us, as far as Airbnb?
They're under a different tax. I mean, LRCB, LRCVB does not do their inspection, that is also covered underneath the state fire marshal, and, uh, and our fire marshal, and our building official. And they do inspections, but it is an inspection that's done when it initially opens up, like certificate of occupancy, and then the fire marshal set that up to do it on a cycle. And I can't speak for what the cycle it is.
Is it annually like the Airbnb?
I do not know that.
Okay.
But that is done with our fire marshal's office.
Okay, all right, and I had a, a second question. Um, there is a, um, the, um, we, there's a way to, there's gonna be a way to identify There is a, there's a way, there's going to be a way to identify which houses are Airbnbs? Can you explain that process?
Well, this ordinance doesn't set that up. What we would have to do is we would have to hire a third-party, a firm that would essentially research the internet and provide us a list of Airbnbs that is operating within the city. And then we would compare those with the registered ones, and then go out and investigate.
And the Airbnbs would have to be registered because they're short-term rentals?
Yes, the businesses would, not the company Airbnb, but each individual property.
So I have a question. If you have an Airbnb that strictly rents more than 30 days a month, would you have a way to exclude that?
No, this is for 30 days or less, less than 30 days.
You have an Airbnb that someone is using, that they only rent it for a calendar year, more than 30 days a month. You have an Airbnb where they rent it for two months, three months, and that's the end of the year. Would you have a way to distinguish between that person and a person that rents on a day-to-day basis?
Not initially. We'd have to go investigate.
So, okay. So, that's my question, is do you have a way to make sure that you're not unduly bringing in people that would be taxed unburdened with your process now?
Well, under that, it would fall underneath the long-term rental program. And so they would still have to be, I think there's a certain number that they would have to do, to be licensed in the city to be renting homes out.
Absolutely.
And that's under a different department.
But that's not my question. I'm asking is your process, do you have a way to delineate between the Airbnbs that are under 30 days and the Airbnbs that are over 30 days?
No, currently, we do not.
Okay. Would that be considered in your third-party system that's going to be pulling them? You want to be randomly pulling them off Airbnb?
Yeah, we'd have to investigate that. Like I said, we'd have to get that report from them and try to go investigate and see what is actually out there at that location.
But do you understand my question?
Yes, I do.
Is there, how would you figure out if a person came by and looked at a house, saw people in it, and saw them leave, and set it up as an Airbnb? Is there a way for them to say, that is short-term versus that is long-term? It'll look the same on the internet, it'll look the same everywhere else. Do you have a way of separating those two?
Currently, we do not from Airbnb.
Will you guys take the time to make sure that that happens?
Yes. Like I said, it would still be up to us to investigate, and we'd have to determine it. And if it is determined to not be 30 days or less, then we would turn that over to our business, finance department, and our housing department, to make sure it's on their rolls to do that.
Okay. But do you see my point?
I do.
I don't know how you could even do that, besides having somebody sit in front of somebody's house 24/7 to see when they came and left. Like, I don't even know how you, because Airbnb won't give you any information.
No, but we don't enforce on the individuals that come into the property that rents it. Our enforcement is on the property owner.
Okay. And if the property owner is renting an Airbnb on strictly long-term, how would you know?
I just said, we wouldn't know until we investigated, until it was turned in and we went and looked.
And I guess what I'm saying is, what investigative facts or information would you use to find out that?
Well, we contact the property owner.
And if the property owner said, yeah, they're always long-term, that's the end of it?
Not necessarily. We would ask, corroborate that with Airbnb, corroborate with the property taxes, and what has been paid, whether they have just bought it, whether they are, you know, paying the taxes for the business. We'd say, do we have, you know, with our finance department, are they on the rental rolls? Do they rent more than so many properties a year?
It would have to do whether it's long or short-term, though.
Well, I'll just explain that there's two different deals. There's short-term, which is less than 30 days.
I agree.
And long-term, but they're both are regulated.
Yeah, I agree.
It just depends on where they go.
And I'm agreeing, if somebody has a house long-term that they use Airbnb strictly for, let's say, travel nurses, and they're only 90 days, and they never go into the short-term threshold, how do you tell the difference between?
Well, one is we require documentation. Word of mouth doesn't close the investigation. They have to prove to us that they are long-term rental, or if they're operating a short-term rental.
And how?
They'd have to show us either lease agreements, or agreements that's been done with Airbnb, or whatever company is holding that up. We would have to see those.
Okay. So, that puts a burden on the people that are renting long-term, that now they have to provide all this documentation, even though they've never done short-term whatsoever. And they're also paying long-term, and under the long-term provision on the law, but now they have to provide information. And you, do you see what I'm saying? It produces undue burden for people who should not be applied in this system.
I understand what you're getting at. I'm just explaining the process would be.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm sorry. I'm back one more time. And my real concern right now is that, in all of this that we're talking about, it seems like you have people, you know, and I don't have anything against capitalism, but they're infiltrating our neighborhoods right now. And I just think if you do this thing, you need to have some system wherein, if you're coming into our majority black neighborhoods, and you have people of another hue that are buying up these properties and converting them into Airbnbs, you need to require, as a city, that they have some sort of minority partnership. Because if you do, you know, again, what's happened already over here? I mean, all of this area over here, South Little Rock, over into East Little Rock now, has been converted, all that stuff has matriculated from first white, they go out to West Little Rock, now they're coming back in, and they're taking over our properties for little or nothing. If you're going to do that, and you're going to take our properties for little or nothing, give us some sort of voice, and give us some participation in the capitalism. That's all I'm saying. If you're going to ask for a license to do that in an Airbnb, you should, as a city, require, just like you do with other minority participation, some participation in that commercial property. That's what it is. This is commercial property. It ain't really private, but it's commercial. You own it as a private person, but I'm just saying, you need to do it as a city, because again, we're left out all over again. And then here we go out here in the projects, wherever, and our neighborhoods are being deprived, and our property values are being, you know, delineated, whatever, but we don't have any real value at that point. So all I'm saying is, if you're going to do this, make it good for everybody, not just for white folk. And that's what you're doing, because by and large, white folk are going to come in with the large dollars, you're going to have big companies that come in with big dollars, buying up all the houses, and then they doing all these Airbnbs. So where do we come in? What's our participation? So you have to do that. If not, you're going to have a city that's in disarray all over again. So just think about that. Think about it. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. My name is Drew Glover. I was born in Plaskett County. I've lived here nearly my entire life. We, my wife and I are both educators. We moved to South Arkansas for two and a half years, and we're so very excited to move back to Plaskett County last summer. We have lived all over Little Rock. We've lived in southwest Little Rock, we've lived across the street from UALR in Broadmoor, we've lived in less Little Rock, in Riverdale, we've lived in Levy, and now we live over here in Pettaway area. And we were so eager to reinvest in a community, in a neighborhood, but our experience with an Airbnb that kind of just popped up out of nowhere, that has been more venue than hotel motel, has completely changed our perspective on where we are choosing to invest our money as teachers. And it's not easy for us to change or redirect. So once we lose the good feeling that we thought we were getting in a neighborhood, it's not going to be easy for us to transition somewhere else, especially if there's not, and what I'm hearing is more involvement from the neighborhoods to let people have a say in that. Because I've always, I've been a renter almost my entire life, and we finally have the nicest house we've ever lived in, but we're dealing with problems that take away with what we thought was going to be a great space for us and our two little kids to move back to. And it's, we just got completely blindsided by this development. It wasn't something that we knew going into, buying a house in this area. And so that's, I just wanted to share that, as somebody that just moved back to Little Rock and that was very excited about it, and I guess I didn't really understand the lack of regulations, it's apparent and obvious that neighborhoods have to be involved. If somebody's going to start something new or change it, let your next-door neighbor be a part of that, because I want to know my people. I want to know everybody in my neighborhood. And that, maybe that's part of being a teacher, but that's all I wanted to share, is somebody that came back to Little Rock, I want to invest in my neighborhood and be part of things, but I don't feel like I'm in a neighborhood when I lose that neighborhood feel. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Hi, Jimmy Walker, and I live in University, first of all, raised here in Little Rock, and I live in University Park subdivision. And I carefully chose this subdivision because, number one, police reports it had the less least amount of crime and everything else, because that's what I want. I don't care if my neighbors, white, black, green, or yellow. Okay? I just want peaceful, loving neighbors. But what I have seen since I've been in University Park, with the Airbnb place that we have there, that it's been rented out to contractors, they come ringing on doorbells, selling satellite systems, selling security systems, and then two weeks later, the house, some of the houses they went to, they've been vandalized, and lawn mowers missing. I'm not saying they did it. And I don't have problems with people, with the SDRs, that's good people that's doing things, because I'm sure it is some. But I'm saying, as far as the University Park, I can only speak for that neighborhood because I carefully chose it, that it's just not, it don't work in our neighborhood. It's like, we said, we need to know our neighbors and love our neighbors. We don't need somebody coming in 24 hours a day, different days, music, people walking the streets. I mean, I don't have a problem in confronting them. You can see I'm kind of tiny, so I don't have a problem confronting somebody that's walking the neighborhoods. But I'm saying that our neighborhood is older, our older neighborhood, people retired, people cared and loved about their properties. And we should take notice that, hey, there are some areas that just ain't good for SDRs and all this. I mean, if we set guidelines up, we need to have for long-term and stuff like that to be able to, because people have invested their lives, and they can't just pack up and go now. But it's so important that we're missing one thing, and that's safety. We need to be safe in our neighborhoods. And so many times, it's been crime after crime after crime, that it doesn't, it doesn't take that. I mean, and so, I'm not against STRs or anything else, but it has to be in the right neighborhood. If y'all hear what I'm saying, it's got to be in that right neighborhood, but I'm just preaching on safety. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Redding, and I just was hoping you could help me understand the difference between a rezoning and the conditional usage license?
A rezoning permanently changes the property zoning from whatever it was previously, like R2, for single-family residential, to a short-term rental, whatever designation that would be.
But are you saying they're all going to be rezoned, or are you going to go with the?
A conditional use permit is a conditional rezoning. The underlying zoning is still there. And so if, when that has an opportunity to be revoked, and then revert back to the underlying zoning. When it's not the conditional zone, the CUP, then that is the straight zoning, that is a rezoning to another one. There is no revocation. It is, it doesn't have an underlying zoning. It is the zoning.
And so what's the direction right now? Are you trying to have everybody rezone? Are we doing conditional usage license?
Currently, right now, they are all underneath a special use permit, which allows to tie to the individual property use or owner.
But if, but if we're operating STRs and aren't designated as BnBs, I'm being asked to rezone, which I don't want to do. I'm a residential property, and I don't think that's the right move. So in the interim, as we're trying to decide how to move forward, I mean, is there a conditional usage license option, or are you just going to force people to rezone in the process before the decisions are made?
Well, currently, you know, we had put a hiatus on enforcement, and we did start up enforcement back in January because it still is on the books. Everybody that is operating a short-term rental, it's either a bed and breakfast, or it has to be rezoned to a planned development. The enforcement was held off until the state legislator ended their session. And currently, as we go through this process, we would defer that enforcement until this process ends. But if this process doesn't finish, if the board chooses not to adopt an ordinance, then it still would revert and be underneath the previous adopted codes. They are enforceable.
So then you would require anyone who wants to have an STR to rezone to a commercial? Is that what you're saying?
It depends on whether they are owner-occupied, they're there operating as a bed and breakfast, or they are not.
Okay. So, in the interim, there's not the conditional usage license option, but that may be if the ordinance passes? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
But there may be modifications at this time, that the board makes the final decision, and that hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Coleman, and I thank all of you for allowing this time today for this conversation. I am a neighborhood president, and I live in the 72209 area. I hear a lot of conversation about ordinances and, you know, the policing and all of this about the property. Well, I see a lot of rentals in neighborhoods, and because we don't have a neighborhood, we have a neighborhood association. So there are out-of-state buyers buying a property, and they're renting them, and they do a fine job with restoring the property. The rent is going for like 13, maybe 18 now, three-bedroom homes, one bath, sometimes one and a half. But they're not taking care of their property. There's one house, out-of-state owners, that, this house has five dogs in it, pit bulls, with a four-foot fence on the side. So we're talking about Airbnbs when we can't even police the rental and stuff, and everything is, you know, if we don't complain, we don't get results. So, you know, if y'all don't complain, you don't get results. Look at your neighborhood covenants, go back, Jamie said that you can go and research this stuff on LittleRock.org. You have to be, you have to educate yourself, and you have to know what's going on in order for us to have power. And I commend the neighborhood presidents and the other people with the neighborhood because the neighborhoods need to have a voice. People coming from out-of-state, and Mr. Walker was saying, you know, he said, the white vote? No, it ain't the white vote. Y'all, it's the, you know, it's the Asians that are coming in, buying up the property, because, you know, we can say what we want to say, and we got a lot of Hispanics that are coming in, buying up a lot of property, and they're not renting to nobody but themselves. So, you know, I, you know, if the Airbnb owners, you know, capitalism is capitalism. Everybody's out for a dollar bill. But we want a peaceful neighborhood, and that's what I had to say. Thank you.
My name is Angela Smith. I live in Little Rock. I have Airbnb in North Little Rock. So we've kind of already gone through this process with North Little Rock as well, found out a lot of good things at that meeting, had to pay their permit tax of $300, also pay my franchise tax here in Little Rock for my permit, my business permit of $200, and now I have to pay this if I want to do an Airbnb in Little Rock. One of my questions is too, do this Plaskett County count? Because I own property in Plaskett County.
If it is within our extraterritorial jurisdiction?
Okay. I don't, I don't even know, to tell you the truth. We can't even, where we live at in Plaskett County, we don't even, we can't even vote for mayor.
Well, it used to not, it's varied a little bit now because the city has grown, but when they set it up decades ago, it was three miles outside of the city limits at that snapshot in time, is our extraterritorial jurisdiction which holds the zoning. So we can enforce zoning out in our ETJ, and I'll just call it that because it makes it easier to say, in that area that's already set. So it depends. Some of Plaskett County is not within that area, and we do not enforce.
Okay.
And then there's an area of the county that's more on the southeast, that we have only enacted subdivision regulations in that extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay. So I'll find out about that.
And if you contact our office, we have all that documentation of the areas, and we could tell you where you lie within your property and within your RETJ, or outside totally in the county.
Okay. I did want to explain a couple of things too. I think somebody said something about the hotel. Airbnb is like the only platform that pays hotel taxes to the city. So I just want, you know, everybody to know, there's not, you know, any regulation, we don't have to do that. They already do. So, I just want, you know, everybody to know, there's not, you know, any regulation. We don't have to do that. They already do that for us. So, I was wondering, what was the 4% tax going towards?
No, that's, that was just a reiteration of what the LRCVB tax already has. It's not an additional tax. That 4% goes to LRCVB, Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So, that's the tax that we already paid as being Airbnb?
And that is something that the individual property owner, the operator of that, has to pay.
Yeah.
Now, I think Airbnb's paying it for some, but there's other, it doesn't have to be. Airbnb is not what this code is. It's for short-term rentals. There's other entities that's out there.
But I'm just saying, Verbo doesn't do it. You have to do it yourself.
Ultimately, it is a responsibility of the property owner to make sure the taxes are paid.
Yes. I'm just saying, it's just easier with Airbnb because they do it for us.
Yeah.
Okay. And I feel like somebody else said something about Airbnb is the one that needs to be regulated, not necessarily the property owners, because it seems like that's where the issue is. And I understand they're paying the 4% tax, so they wouldn't have to tell you who we are that own it. But I don't see how you're going to regulate everybody that's doing, like this man said, you know, you're not going to know who's doing long-term, short-term, and all that. Unless you regulate Airbnb and make them, everybody has to have a permit or something, you have to have a number in order to run an Airbnb. So, and I, I'm doing the right thing. I pay all my taxes. I pay whatever you ask me to pay in order to run my business. So, I feel like, and I want to go back because North Little Rock has over 100 or so Airbnbs in North Little Rock. But only 22 people, or people that own Airbnbs are regulated. They're the only ones paid for permits. 22 people out of 100. So, I don't see how you're going to find out who, everybody's doing it unless you make Airbnb do their part as well.
Well, unfortunately, we, we do not, zoning does not regulate that type of corporation. We are, we, zoning is tied to the property. And in that, now, please keep in mind that I don't know about other contracts that other entities do. But Airbnb, when you sign up for an Airbnb, you're signing something that says that the property is zoned to do what you're doing. And the, and the government, essentially, the city government or county government, whatever entity that regulates that, is you're operating per that zoning regulation. So, they're taking, they're putting that responsibility back to the property owner. They are not taking that responsibility. So, if you're operating an area that's not zoned properly, what they're saying is, well, it's, it's the property owner, the one that's signed up. It's not us. And then we, it's zoning code, so it's tied to the property. So, we cite the property owner.
I also wanted to let everyone know that there's a fair housing law, that you can rent to five unrelated people. So, that it's legal to do what we're doing. And that's all I got to say.
Good evening. You people, y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves because these fine people are trying to help you. Ain't that something? They can't keep, they can't even keep the rental properties that are already registered. You can't even maintain those. You can't even maintain your own buildings. You are out of control, and you people ought to be ashamed of yourself because they work for you. You don't ask them if you can do something? Yeah, you, and it's, it's really, it's really, it's really disgusting that on one hand, you're talking about all this homelessness and all this unaffordable housing, and you want to go out and build, build tiny houses for a homeless person. I don't know how the heck a homeless person pays light bill for, for, for a tiny house. I don't care how tiny it is. I don't know how that happens, so that means that I'm going to have to pay for that too. Now, short-term rentals provide a, a much-needed service. If they didn't provide a needed service, then they would not exist. They would go out of business. Every individual that rents a short-term rental has the capacity to determine if they want to stay in this place or if they don't want to stay in this place. They can determine whether it's safe or it's not safe. It's not your responsibility to try to, to try to police the behavior of every individual. And you know, the, the, the most embarrassing thing is, you, you don't even have answers to very, very simple questions. You don't have an answer to, if an Airbnb is, has to pay an annual inspection fee for, and that's based on the number of rooms that you're renting, then every hotel needs to pay an annual, annual inspection fee based on the number of rooms they're renting. But see, you, you, you just glance over that. It's, it's really, it's really, it's really amusing to watch elected officials and bureaucrats stand up with this, with this righteous, righteous air and tell people that what you're doing is to help them. What you're doing is trying to prevent out-of-state people from coming in. That's a lie. You're talking about individuals investing in Little Rock. If they're, if they're updating houses, then that house was probably going to be falling, falling down, or you were probably going to tear it down and put a lien on it. You have a shortage, shortage of housing stocks. Someone, someone mentioned that earlier. If safety is your concern, how safe is a homeless camp over, off of, off of 40? Are your inspectors out there? No, they're not, because you don't care about safety. That's the priority. I got a homeless person out in my building. Excuse me, ladies, but he, he was pleasuring himself behind the building. 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, your concern is not safety. And if your concern is really not safety, that means you're lying. And the, the only question is, what are you lying about? And you people, y'all need to ask that question. What are you lying about? What, what, what is the motive? If a person needs to make a little extra money to make ends meet, and there is a person who's willing to pay them for the service that they're providing, then that contract is as old as time. And it only, it only becomes a problem when government steps in between those people. Because now, that person who's paying, the, the, the individual who's providing the service has to take a, has to pinch a little bit off and give to you. You're talking about third parties? So, you got a third-party investigator going on? You got a third-party company coming in and, and policing the internet, looking for all these little webpages on what's going on? I mean, you don't, you don't understand how ridiculous that sounds? You don't do your own job. You need to do your job. Don't try to do my job. Don't try to do other people's job. Do your job. Potholes. Streetlights. Homeless camps. That's your job. And again, y'all ought to be embarrassed about yourself because you don't ask these people. These people work for you. You're talking about having people rezone, rezone the house, and see, it, it's amusing because it's obvious that you make this stuff up as you go along. Somebody was sitting in a room and said, "We need to regulate." And then y'all started throwing stuff against the wall. Well, you know, that's a good idea. Well, you know, there are people who are unsafe. Well, you know, there are people who, who come from out of town and buy houses and renovate them. Well, you know, there are people who do this. You are the people who do that. And before you know it, you got, you have an ordinance that you need to come in and save these people who are not even smart enough to save themselves. But you're smart enough to save everybody. And do you know how stupid that sounds? We talked about the housing shortage. Air, I mean, Airbnb, short-term rentals. A, a person who's down on their luck, like the lady I saw last night, walking around pushing a cart, she can much more easily afford one room to get her off the streets, to keep her from being violated, than she can a, a whole house. And if, if a homeowner is welcoming that lady in, trying to help that, help this, this person try to get themselves together, then that should be allowed. Well, it's not be, should be allowed. It is allowed. Because what, what you and most of you up there are not even old enough to rem, know, remember. You old enough to remember. And Ms. Akcock, with all due respect, you, you old enough to remember. Short-term rentals are not a new thing. Room for rent. You ever heard of that? Room for rent. So, how did, how did room for rent last for so long without all of these issues, without you coming in and trying to regulate? How did that happen? Lastly, well, my, my, my final point, you're talking about hiring, they're talking about hiring a third party to come in and browse the internet looking for you, you very bad person. They're talking about a third party to come in and, and, and determine which one of you is not doing what the, the high and mighty people tell you you're supposed to be doing. Third party. That's money. That's your money, your money, your money, your money, and your money. So, it's, in, in addition to wasting current budgets, current money on all these things that are competing with private businesses, reducing private capital, you want to add and, add on to that? The gentleman talked about crime. We're talking about homeless, homeless camps are not safe, but you want to go into somebody's house who probably does a pretty good job of taking care of themselves and cleaning their house up? Making sure their grass is cut? People who are trying to earn money to improve their quality of life, or just to make ends meet? And, and you're penalizing private citizens, private citizens, you're penalizing them for providing a needed service. A service that if it was not needed, they would not exist. If hotels were, were providing what these people want, they don't want to go to a hotel. So, if hotels were providing something that they want, then they would have gone to a hotel. But they chose to go to another place, a, a different accommodation. And right now, what you're trying to do is regulate that, limit the ability of people to earn, earn additional income, limit the ability of people to open their homes up, and, and reduce, if it's a, if it's a housing issue, reduce the housing, limiting the people's ability to welcome out-of-state people coming in and visiting, and directing all of that to, to your commercial partners. So, number one, the ordinance, if an ordinance goes in, hotels need to be, need to have that same, the same fees based on the same calculations. If that's not the case, then I guarantee you, well, regardless, regardless, you're going to have a lawsuit, regardless. And y'all are going to pay that bill too. Hotels need to be regulated the same as, and this gentleman, he's, he's, he's going to pick that up for me. Regulated the same, same fees, same fee structure, same money, and I guarantee you, this ordinance would not happen. But since, you know, you have individuals who are just trying to make a, and a little extra $300 or $400 a month, you can attack them because that $300, $400 a month, they don't, they don't want to pay an attorney. Lastly, y'all ought to be ashamed of yourself, and you people are embarrassing.
Arthur Sam, I had one more question about the annual inspection fee. Can you explain what processes or what's going to be included, the services to the annual inspection fee?
Could you please repeat that?
Is annual, annual inspection fee $100 per bedroom up to $500 max?
Yes.
What services will be provided for that $500 max or $100 per bedroom? What are the safety steps?
That's the annual inspection.
What does that entail? Are they going to look in the room? Are they going to check for bedbugs, mites?
No, that would be life safety, health issues for the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, for, to get their yearly certificate of occupancy.
So, what are they checking on?
They're checking on everything that's life safety from electrical. If there's plugs that they see that are broke, it's, it's the, it's the building. It's whatever is a life safety issue in the building. So, if there's a chip in the paint, not necessarily. You know, but they're looking for if the, if, do they have fire alarms? Do they have carbon monoxide detectors? Is there an, an exit plan? Is it signed right? You know, those types of issues.
But that's the purpose of it.
That's the purpose of it.
Then why would the price increase because the owner's away? Does the electrical disappear if the owner's more than 1,500 feet away?
I thought it was all by bedroom.
It says, unless the owner does not reside on the property, resides within a unit within 1,500 feet, then inspection fee will be, inspection fee will be $500. So, if the owner had a one-bedroom and he lived next door, they're going to check for electrical and all of those things, correct?
Well, I think they fall underneath, this new ordinance falls underneath the same special use permit.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm reading from here, what, what you, you have written here on the ordinance. It says, "An annual inspection fee for $100 per bedroom up to max 500. Unless the owner does not reside on the property or reside in a unit within 1,500 feet of said property, then inspection fee will be $500." I'm asking you, is there more electrical work that has to be checked because the owner's more than 1,500 feet away? Is there more air conditioning that needs to be checked? What does that have to do with an inspection fee?
Just where the records are, can you tell me about what section you're reading, bro?
Man, I don't know what this is. A2, AA2, page 5. It's the Bed and Breakfast House, Section A1A2. I'm not sure how to say that. But that paragraph, to me, makes absolutely no sense. If you explain what you said an inspection was, proximity of an owner should have nothing to do with whether electrical is in there. Do you see what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying there?
In that one, that's the difference between owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. If you're looking at owner-occupied, then they're living in the home, and they may only have-
So, that makes the electrical better?
If you, if you excuse me, I'll let you speak. If you just let me have time to speak.
I apologize.
Thank you. Then they're living in a, a bedroom, right? And then they may have only one bedroom, you know, rented out.
Yes.
Where this is, in the fact that if they're not at the property, they're renting the entire house out. So, it is assuming that the entire house is being rented, as opposed to one person living in there and then renting out by the bedroom. So, it's, it has nothing to do with, it has to do with whether they live there or whether they do not live there, owner-occupied or not owner-occupied.
I agree. But what are you, are you saying that if the owner's there, you only check the room and you don't check the kitchen?
No, we check wherever the, the renters would go, you know, everything that is going to be occupied.
Everywhere, whether the owner was there or not, though?
We inspect anything that would be occupied or the rentable space.
Okay. So, is there more rentable space if the owner is present versus not present?
I understand the point that you're getting. What I'm trying to tell you is that we tried to break it down so that there was not a flat fee for both, that if somebody is living in the home, they'd be able to just, maybe rent one home out, then their fee would be less because it's just one bedroom.
But do you see how that would be unfair to a person who had one bedroom and it wasn't there? They're taking an undue burden if this is an inspection fee. Now, if this is an occupancy fee of the owner, then you should have two separate fees. One for just people within the house, and one that's without the house. But if you put them both together like that, that penalizes a person because they're not present within the property, and it shouldn't have anything to do with the inspection. Do you get my point?
I understand. We, we inspect whatever the CO is for, so when they're renting that room out, that inspection is for that room and anything that they would use as part of that occupancy. So, if somebody, since it's, that would be a primary residence and they're renting out per room. If they're renting out the entire residence, well, that changes the aspect of that home. Then it would, the entire residence would be inspected, as opposed to just the single room.
So, they are only inspecting one room?
I was going to say, it's the, or whatever they occupy. So, if they rent the room and they say, "And we also let them use the kitchen," then we would inspect the kitchen. We would inspect whatever they're using.
Okay. 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 That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. We want to have one more?
Okay. My name is Brenda Tanner. I'm the president of Twin Lakes B Homeowners Association. And we are just trying to get clarification. I'm, I'm trying to get clarification on this ordinance that you all, the draft that I received here. I didn't get the whole thing, that you all are, are separating it, the explanation of the sections. But what I'm trying to- But what I'm trying to understand here is that the argument is, if I'm understanding correctly, is that your STRs, you all having a problem with the STRs and the bed and breakfasts and the hotels having different rates, because everybody's running a business here. But the STRs saying that my business should not be taxed like the other, other businesses, hotel and, and, and bed and breakfasts. Is that, is that what I'm understanding? That's the problem? Okay. And the other thing I'm saying is, we as residents in the neighborhood, we are supposed to just sit back and, because you want to bring your business to our neighborhood where we are residents, and you want to bring your business in the neighborhood because you feel like this is a place that you want your visitors to come. But you're gonna make a profit off of it. You bring your visitors in, but you're making a profit. Do I understand that? Okay. Okay, so the, the, the problem is with the residence part, we don't want you to bring your business into our neighborhood, and you're making a profit, and you're gonna argue because I want to make a profit and you don't want to give us any say-so when you move into the neighborhood, that we should have a say-so whether you want a business, this type of business in your neighborhood, because we are having problems with your rentals, because like you say, if you are not living there, your visitors are giving the residents problems because they are not abiding by the rules that they're supposed to, and it's nobody there to tell them otherwise. It's just, it's left up to the residents to help police your visitors that you're making money from. Is that what, that's, that's what I'm hearing? See, because in, in a, in, in any other business, if you come into my area and you want to use my space, I'm supposed to get a profit from it. I mean, I'm just saying. But, but like you say, this is, no, I'm saying this is my space. If you can keep your space over there, but that's, that's not the case, that's what I'm hearing, that's not the case that's happening. You are not keeping your space over there. Your, your visitors, when you are not there, are in my space. So therefore, I become your caretaker for your business that you are making a profit off of. And I'm not, and, and what it is, is making me having to take care of your business because your visitors are not here. So I'm not getting a profit. I'm not getting any money from it because you are somewhere else. So that's, that's the problem that I'm, I'm hearing. I mean, you know, maybe I'm wrong, you know, I'm a little slow here. But maybe that's what is happening. And we are asking, if you want to bring your business in your area and you, and, and in our area, and you're gonna make a profit. I mean, I know it's good by helping the homeless, but no, no. I mean, you know, we can, we can say that, but you do this for a business because you're making a profit. I, you know, somebody got to pay, and somebody got to have money to make, support it. But, so what I'm saying is, I mean, what I'm hearing is, give us, like I said, an ordinance, if you want to do that, put it in a section so that if the people that's there is living there, trying to make their home there, because they do twenty-four-seven. These people might come one time a day, one time a month, two months. But this is, this is the residents twenty-four-seven today. I don't, I can't go because your people, I can't leave my home. I don't have that type of money, you know, some of us do. I can, I, I'm gonna leave my home till your, your visitors leave, and then I can come back because I don't want to be, you know, part of their party or whatever the case might be, that inconvenience. So what I'm hearing is that let us have the opportunity to, for your audience, to put it over in this area as a business so I don't have to go down to City Hall reporting that these people that's renting is causing chaos in the neighborhood. So I gotta sit out to my time to help get, run your business, help you run your business, but I'm not gonna get a profit from it. So I, I think, and what we're asking is, give us the opportunity in your audience somewhere here that if you have, if you want to come in the area, somebody need to respect the people who's already there, that's twenty-four-seven living there. So that's what I'm understanding. If, I mean, that's what I'm getting from it. So that's all we are asking in your audience, somewhere to put that in there. To help the residents.
Could it make it brief? We're supposed to end at seven and we've indulged.
I got one question. My name is Eddie Schmelt. Uh, my wife spoke on, spoke on this a little bit already, uh, about the, uh, pay that you all expect us to give you all, uh, that's living here in the state. How are you gonna get that same money from the ones that's out of state? And, and then there, there are, there are a group of individuals that are coming in the state, somebody mentioned this earlier, and, 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 uh, buying up all these properties, but you have no way to contact those individuals to, to get any fees from them. That's the same thing they was having over in North Little Rock. Only, she mentioned only, only twenty of us paying, and all the ones that's out of state, they're not able to reach. So, so how are you all gonna regulate this to, to support the ones that's living here in Arkansas, trying to help benefit the state and those that's out that really don't give a who?
Well, any of our regulation in the zoning ordinance, if we cannot get a hold of the entity, uh, we can get a hold of the legal entity that is filed on tax records down at the county, and we send citations to them to appear in court, and then it's a judge's order. If they do not pay their business license, it would be a judge's order at the end of the day that would shut the business down. That's the process.
So there's no way that we? So, so what, what I, what I like to see, part of what I like to see happen is give the state the opportunity to work the state before we allow others outside the state come in and, and, uh, just buy up the property. Give us that opportunity and not just because they got bigger pockets, they get those opportunities before we had that opportunity.
Thank you. So just as a reminder, if you didn't, well, we was trying to wrap this thing up, so if it's brief, because we've been here for a while.
All right, my name is Shed, and, uh, I'm born and raised from Little Rock, and my parents had property, and when they passed, we had to divide the property, and it became hard for me as an individual to maintain my portion, my fourth. And so we, like I said, I work for the Housing Authority, okay? And we rented to everybody, my parents rented to everybody. And I remember when there were people who could not pay their rent, and we went in the hole, and it affected our household. And it is hard to have rental property, period. And as someone who has gone over to, as y'all want to say, the dark side, or into Airbnb, which I'm proud to be, it has sustained, allowed me to keep what my parents worked so hard to get. I, I would have lost it, okay? If it wasn't for Airbnb, there would be no more houses in my parents' legacy. My father was a Marine, and when he came home, he had to stay in someone's boarding house until he got on his feet, even though he had a wife who had to stay with his mother, okay? And he taught me how to do maintenance. That's how I ended up in maintenance. And so I have, everybody in the neighborhood, I'm over here in Blitzville, which is right off of the Ninth Street original, and it's where the people who built Ninth Street, it's where they lived. And so I walk in that history of my people and saying, "Help us keep our houses. Let us have our Airbnbs. We can keep houses because they are being torn down." And my neighbors came to me and said, "Miss Shed, I see you got a couple of properties. Can you save that one?" So when I save that one, I feel attacked now about, even though our stuff is diverse, because it's not all Airbnb, it's diverse. Because I love my neighbors. My neighbors are my family. When the snow came, they called me to come cut their water off because my neighbors are getting older and they're passing away. And their children have moved away and do not want to live here. And we have to save these houses. We have to save these neighborhoods. And that means we have to be diverse. And I understand that everybody don't want an Airbnb in their neighborhood, but would you rather have a lot? Would you rather have the little boy that when his mom died, he was eighteen years old, and he didn't know he had to pay taxes? So he lost his house. All the other young people that was in my neighborhood, right over here, keep moving further and further out of the city. I can't afford to live in university. I would love to. But if I had the money, I probably would still double down and live right here because I can save a house. And I know that house belonged to someone who had to give up so much for them to be able to own it. It's just not just a black-white thing, but the sweat and equity that my grandparents and my mothers, because I call the ladies in the neighborhood over here my mothers, they sweated for these homes. And I see them boarded up and being torn down because the kids are gone, and they don't want to come back. I'm not mad at them, but help us save the house. One way or another, it's gonna be a lot, or we're gonna save it with an Airbnb. We're gonna serve it. We can save it if we diversify, not just Airbnb, but rental property as well. And a lot of us are doubling down when I could be out west, but I doubled down and stayed over here. And my family said, "Why are you still over here?" No, I believe in you. I believe in my mothers and my fathers and my forefathers, and making sure that my grandmother, Willie Shed, my father, Henry Thomas Shed, and my mother, Marion Shed, all the sweat equity they put into those houses, and I had to cut grass every Saturday and was mad. And I didn't understand why I had to cut everybody else's yard. He said, "'Cause we own it." Now, I still cut everybody's yard, and I don't own it. I cut the grass because I see my mothers are getting older, but I'm getting older and getting tired. And we need to encourage our young people to buy property. When they can't afford to buy property, what we gonna do? We gonna lose it all. Like that young man who lost his parents' property because he didn't know to pay taxes. Taxes. Fifteen hundred dollars, he lost his house. And his mama. Pandemic has hurt us. So like the other brother said, let's wake up and let's save Little Rock, all of us. Let's find the middle ground, and let's not double tax people who are trying to save a house. Because we know they, we, we, we see these houses. We drive past them, and we see them boarded up. And we see the red notices come, and we know it's five hundred, I think it was like five hundred properties I heard on the news that, uh, needed to be torn down. And I'm like, who gonna help us save them? Let's stop fighting each other. Let's save some houses. And it'll also save the housing problem we're having with the homeless. And I don't have no money to buy a whole bunch of properties. So I can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, everyone, you can continue to send comments in, uh, to our department. Uh, it's, it's under littlerock.gov. I think, uh, uh, somebody pronounced it differently. It's littlerock.gov. And you can also email them to our office, um, and send in comments that you may have. Thank you. Well, up until the board takes a final vote. Well, it's up for Tuesday, but I do not know if it's gonna be a vote took this Tuesday. So I can't determine when they're gonna take their final vote.